We're live and not recording. Thanks, Katie. Can we go ahead and roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld.
I'm here.
Ms. Kiyabachi. Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Hayman. Ms. Carrie Anikis. Dr. Morris.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg, here.
Harley Meltzer.
Here.
And Gavin Lewis Richmond.
Yeah.
Seven present, two absent, and two student board reps this evening. Thanks, Katie. Will everyone please join me now in student study. Welcome, everybody, to our November 1st school board meeting. Looking at our agenda, we first list out our prior meetings. On October 3rd, we had a regular public board meeting. On October 11th, we had a Board Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting. On October 17th, we had the Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And on October 24th, we had our Communications Committee meeting. We then list out our upcoming meetings. Next week, on November 7th, we have our regular public board meeting. On November 16th, I will have the MCIA Board of Directors meeting. On November 21st, we have both the Policy Committee meeting, as well as the Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. Both those will be held in a virtual format. On November 21st is the North Monaco Joint Operating Committee meeting. And December 5th will be our Board Reorganization and Public Work Session. Now, we have a list of presentations. The first one will be our Wissahickin High School Monthly Highlights.
So, October was a pretty fun month for WIS. We had our homecoming week. Student Council organized a Hypertizing America Show, the Bonfire Spirit Week, the pep rally, and our first homecoming dance. It was pretty fun, and we had two homecoming queens, Abby Cooley and Hazel Mullin. And it was also National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th. This period in the United States is a wonderful opportunity to recognize the history, culture, contributions, and influence of Hispanic and Latinx Americans. And our culinary extrusions club prepared a food favorite, guacamole. And later this month, we have a blood drive on Wednesday, November 16th. And this is where students who meet the requirements are able to donate blood. And it takes 10 minutes to save three lives.
And we have a lot of exciting sports announcements as well. Both boys' water polo and girls' water polo are off to states in three days, which is very exciting. For boys' water polo, I think it's the first time in nine years they're off to state. So, very big deal. Girls' water polo has been going to states for as long as I've been in the high school. But both teams are very excited, and we're excited for them. And field hockey finished their season with 13 wins. They had an unbelievable season. And so, that was fun. I went to their final game, which was fun to watch. And all of our teams, now that they're wrapping up for the fall season, have done a lot of senior nights just to celebrate the seniors, which is very bittersweet as a senior. But I know all the senior athletes have really enjoyed that. And for a staff achievement, our Wissahickin High School German teacher, Frau Wilson, was awarded the Gap Coordinator of the Year Award. And she was honored at a gala dinner in New York City commemorating the 50th anniversary of the German-American partnership program. So, that was a very big deal. Congratulations to her. And yeah, that was a very great event. And then Veterans Day coming up later this month, Friday, November 11th. Our National Arts Society students are decorating the doors of our seven veteran teachers at Wissahickin to honor them. And the National Honor Society students are creating a Veterans Day bulletin board for all the students to look at with some, I believe, pictures and quotes, stuff like that. And the camarada is performing three patriotic pieces, recognizing the armed forces at our memorial on the high school campus. So, we're doing a lot to honor Veterans Day, and I know that all those celebrations will be very successful. And coming up next, this upcoming Monday is our Senior Banquet, which I'm very excited about. As one of the senior officers, I've had fun planning it. It's going to be on the Spirit of Philadelphia, so it'll be a fun night of sailing, dancing, eating. We're doing senior superlatives, so there's a lot to look forward to.
Wonderful. Thank you for those updates. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you again, ladies. Well, next move on to our Director of Security introduction.
Okay, thank you. So, tonight, we have the privilege of meeting our new Director of Security, Mr. Tom Longo, who is here with us tonight. I took the liberty of crafting a few words to try to embarrass him, but if you look at him, he does embarrass very easily. I know, but I'll try. Tom comes to us with a wealth of experience in law enforcement. He started at the Sheriff, Montgomery County Sheriff's Department for six years, and then followed that up with 33 years in the Plymouth Township Police Department. So, he knows law enforcement. He started as a patrol officer, worked his way up to detective sergeant. And along the way, he got 12 commendations for service, which include valor, bravery, and merit. See if I can phrase that. His experience with the Colonial School District, which is where Plymouth is, is important. Not all, of course, all the colonial schools are in Plymouth Township, but many are. So, he has that to bring to us. And on top of all that, he actually has experience as an assistant high school baseball coach, which is what he would have talked about the most in every interview if we had let him, but we didn't. So, why did we hire him? We were impressed with his willingness to learn and grow and be part of the various things we have going on here that are important to us. Impressive sense of humor is, in my mind, most impressive was his sense of humility, which I think is very important. Obviously, he has the experience and the expertise. And then, overall, he just has a presence. His references are impeccable. He knows just about everybody already, and all three police departments that help us, and they all know him. So, there was many a reference opportunity, and they all came back like, wow, you're a good guy here. So, what is he going to do here? Three days a week officially, 60%. But that's really honestly, it's 24, 7, 365 contacts. So, that's just what he rolls. He made that very clear from the beginning. And believe me, superintendents appreciate that. He'll be anchored here in CO. He has an office. We kind of banished him down to IT. That's the only office we had left. But he'll be out in the field very often, in the schools, just sort of interacting and observing and taking things in. He'll deal with all matters of security, be they the drills. It could be planning. It could be training. It could be liaison meetings with the county. Just, for example, to follow up on a conversation we had in this room a few months ago, he'll be orchestrating walkthroughs with the county expert, school security expert. And Tom, he will take a look at things and take notes. And the good news is now we have somebody who can ensure the follow-up of anything that can make us get better at that. So, he'll be a liaison with local, county, state, and basically, he's just going to be the face of WIS Security. So, it's a pleasure and a privilege to introduce to all of you, Mr. Tom Longo. You're not short of words, I know that.
Well, I would just, you know, I'm going to take a few minutes, not very long. I'm truly humbled to be here tonight and for everyone on this board and the administration to put their faith and trust in me to take advantage of constructing this new position, which is a great responsibility that I would never take lightly. I come into this with a wealth of knowledge, and I really only have one goal, and that's to serve everyone involved with Wissahickin School District to the best of my ability and make this school district the safest place it could possibly be from now on. And I know it's a huge task, but I believe I'm up to it and receiving a lot of support so far. And I appreciate the confidence that everyone has had, has shown in me. I don't have anything else to add. I'm hitting the ground running. It's quick-paced right now to get me up to speed, but I don't think it's anything I can't handle. Just glad to be here, glad to be part of the team.
Welcome on board. We're excited to be working with you. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions for Tom?
I have a question. Are you going to be working in... There are incidents sometimes, unfortunately, that happen where local police have to be called in. Are you going to be the point person in those situations, then?
I believe I would be. Coming from my experience on the law enforcement side, I mean, I kind of would have to take a backseat and defer to whatever the law enforcement does, but I would be their point contact.
Great, thanks so much. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, well, again, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Great meeting, everybody.
All right, so we'll move on to our third presentation, the Opportunity Gap Quarterly Report.
All right, so tonight, we have what is actually the first of what are going to become quarterly updates on the opportunity gap. Nice agenda. We're going to have just a very brief look back on how we have handled this topic. You may remember, it used to be called the achievement gap, and that's not actually going away. It's just being subsumed by opportunity. And we've had some things over the years. We'll take a brief look back. We're going to remind us all of our driving force and goal behind this work. And then, we'll talk about both Equity Dashboard, Opportunity Gap Dashboard, which came out of... Well, I was just going to say, the Equity Dashboard is going to encompass a lot of things. And then, these Opportunity Gap Board Updates came from the conversation that we had about how the once a year wasn't really, wasn't getting it done for you. We want to have more dynamic, constant look rather than annual look. So, gap accounting. Before I get this, I was very amused to hear the German-American... What was GAAP? How does it stand for, German-American?
G-A-P-P. So, German-American Partnership Program.
Okay. This is not about the German-American Partnership Program, nor is it about generally accepted accounting principles, other GAAP, which I know Wade would be interested in, no one else. This is about gaps that we have found in terms of how different students are getting the WIS experience. So, back in 2016, we launched what we called the Achievement Gap Ten Year Attack Plan. And since that time, we had these reports, you remember, in January. And it was like a data dump of graphs and things, and we wanted to be comprehensive. But after a while, and we put it all on the website, it's all like very openly shared. But we've been evolving in our understanding of how to deal with this, how to approach it, and how to hopefully solve it. Then, just when we were about ready to evolve, not quite fully, but get there, the pandemic hit. And that created, for everybody, not just WIS, this data void, for lack of a better phrase. Where you recall, we were, we became all of a sudden much more focused on SEL matters, social emotional learning, mental health matters, over achievements, but rather than achievements. We did instruct at the time, but our focus was making sure everybody's all right, making sure people are okay at home, virtual, maybe hybrid, whatever. And so, for two years, we've been kind of driving blind in terms of where our achievement data is. Getting it back now, and we had a little bit last year, but it's unreliable because coming off of COVID, coming off of virtual instruction, it's just different. And then, earlier this year, the board, you recall, we set the goal for having a dashboard that's going to help us track on a more real-time basis. So, I'm using the word dynamic basis. The indicators we use to take a look at how we're doing equity-wise and also how we're doing achievement-wise. So, we're going to set this dashboard up. We'll talk about that in a second. And then, we're going to have the report like this quarterly rather than annually. Now, our driving force is, should be pretty obvious. I'm not going to read that to you. You can read yourself. But we have gaps in equity and a maybe or achievement. And the key here is that what we know is they can combine to create this really nefarious effect of an opportunity gap. And if that happens while the students are with us, and with Wissahickin, and we don't do something about it, it can have lifelong impact in a negative way. So, that's what's driving us. And our goal, it really is to, at the best of our ability, do as much as we can to fix it, to close the gaps wherever we find them. So, it's not going to be some time when we cross the finish line. Because this doesn't work that way. But we're going to try to identify them as best we can. And you remember, like, six years ago, or seven, 2016, we had a much different view, lens of this gap. We were sitting around trying to maybe, you know, like, have teams on attendance, or we were talking about engagement. It's evolved. And now, we know it's about belongingness as well as academic achievement. And so, our goal here is to just eliminate them as best we can so that each and every student can meet with success. So, we're going to have this new Equity Dashboard. This is part of, this is the board goal. It was approved early this year. We're getting it together. It's going to be, I think it's going to actually be a very useful tool. I have some experts in website design and database management who I won't name helping with this project. It's going to live on our district website. It's going to be dynamic, meaning like whenever that data for that indicator is available to us, it'll be up there. It's not going to wait till January. So, for example, like the map testing can be there quarterly. I don't know if we're doing it necessarily quarterly, but more frequently than, say, the PSSAs. PSSAs, as you recall, we all really don't like those because they're so delayed in getting to us. Or maybe the PSAT scores will be, or outcomes will be earlier. So, as soon as they're ready, we'll put them up there. And then, we have also these six equity indicators that the Racial Equity Oversight Committee has been discussing and examining and bringing forth, things like belongingness or things like special education enrollment, gifted enrollment, AP enrollment, staff composition, all those sorts of things. We'll talk about it in a second. But anyway, there's going to be six equity indicators and 13 achievement indicators. So, one of the keys of this is the landing page for the dashboard has got to be simplified. The last thing we need is to inundate people with numbers, and they're just going to go away. We'll have links to all those details if someone's interested in a particular indicator. But that landing page is going to be top-level, real, kind of like guiding the visitor to why we're doing this. And you can go to a link for data pages and expanded narratives on what that link means and all sorts of things. So, this is a list of the indicators that will be up there. And you know, when I go over these right now, but sort of to share the concept. On the left, in the purple area, is the equity indicators are the six. Each one will have a column on the landing page as to when that data was last updated. And then, there'll be a link to a different page somewhere else that will have all the data and information. And of course, that's where all the work will be. Because once we get those PSA scores, I think that's in grade, say, seven. That's our indicator in grade seven. We'll have to sort them properly, get them cleaned up, and then put on that backup page. It won't have any effect on the dashboard other than having the link updated. So, we have the six equity ones. We have our initial 10 achievement ones there. And then, the three in the bottom in blue were an outcome of conversations in this room about the desire for measuring not just achievement as an absolute, but growth. Remember, Johnny, if he's not anywhere close to proficient in grade seven, but did a heck of a job growing, we want to capture that as a success story. And then, next year, hopefully, grows more and so forth until he gets to be proficient. So, the bottom three are growth indicators. We're still hashing out which ones to use. It'll probably be math, sorry, map test in the elementary grades. It's going to be some learning objectives in high school and something in the middle. But anyway, this will all be up there. This is going to be essentially the landing page with some words explaining it, but not the numbers. Numbers will be in the background. And then, at these new quarterly meeting updates, we're going to scrap the January annual report. All of that's still going to be up on the website, and it's still going to be there. It has been, it's been there for six years. We're not hiding anything. It's all there, it'll continue to be there. We're just going to do more frequent things in this room. And the thought is, in these quarterly reports, we might take a look at one equity indicator, say, and one of the achievement indicators, and go take a little deeper dive into that. So, you have a deeper understanding of, when we say math fact fluency in grade four, for example, what does that really mean? And we'll also share out the numbers, but also, I want you to understand like why we picked that for that grade. So, the first one of these things will be in February, which will be a public board meeting. Everybody's welcome. All this will be all open and on the website available. So, in these quarterly updates in this room, you know, two indicators, one equity, one achievement, will be these things. I think this is going to be better than having you drink from a fire hose and get all 10 indicators, and then somebody has a question about PSSAs in seven, and somebody else is wondering about the PACTs in grade 10, and it just doesn't work. So, what it is, what we're, how we measure it, why it's important, we'll get the graphs for that one indicator, not all 13. And then, just as important, what ideas do we have in place to, moving forward, to close that gap? After all, that's the whole point of doing all this. So... Some key takeaways. Meaningful, lasting change takes time. We have to all just absorb that and accept it and deal with that. But that's no reason to let our guard down. In fact, that's just, you get actually more bang for your buck if you start working right now and you lay the foundations for change. We're committed to this. Our understanding is evolving. I keep going back to this concept of belongingness. We kind of had it in the back of our brain that this mattered, but we never really identified it, and we haven't yet quantified it. But that's important. Can't really achieve until you feel like you're part of the school community. And then, we'll just continue to do this as openly and honestly as we possibly can. If we wanted to hide things, we actually, it would be easy. We don't want to hide anything. We're reporting out everything we have on this, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And then, we hopefully, as time goes on, we close the gaps as best we can. So, that's the slides. Any questions from board members? Like, we don't have any data tonight. That'll all be February, once the mechanism gets to place.
Well, thank you for the presentation, Jim. I'm looking forward to more frequent updates. I like the idea of focusing and kind of taking a deep dive into certain areas so that we can get more information. I think it would be a little bit overwhelming if we covered all 10 or 15 different areas that we have in each of those meetings. But to the extent, like, let's say we're covering belongingness at the February meeting, for example, but a board member has a question regarding discipline. I assume either you or Dr. Juwan would be able to answer questions regarding those figures if there's something that, you know, a board member would question regarding...
Absolutely. And we might set up something, well, say, for the equity ones, we revisit each of them on a scheduled basis in the Racial Equity Oversight Committee. So, that would be a good form for that. We don't have a committee necessarily that examines the 10 achievement, the three growth ones. So, yeah, if somebody's wondering about the, why we're using GPA in grade eight or something, whatever it is, absolutely, one of us can take that question.
I think it might also be helpful, leading up to that February meeting, if we maybe had at maybe the January meeting, kind of an overview of what those topics are. Because, you know, for example, there's 10 on the, on the one side. You know, we're not going to hit that. It's going to take almost two years, two and a half years of quarterly reports to hit each of those topic areas. I think it might be helpful just to kind of get an overview of those areas and what they are. Again, you said about math facts, maybe not get a deep dive into it. Or why are we looking at that in fourth grade? What is the reason behind that?
Well, maybe, just thinking aloud here, but maybe that first quarterly report is just that. An overview of the indicators and why, and what, and maybe not a bunch of charts that first meeting. And then, the next one goes to the deep dive. We can talk a little more about that.
Sure. Jeff?
I just want to put one caveat in terms of sharing information about personally identifiable student information that may result in student discipline, because some of those student discipline matters could theoretically come before the board, where the board is acting in the capacity as a quasi-judicial body, where they are going to be acting as judge and jury. So, there may be limitations to the extent to which the details of certain discipline-related matters could be shared until they're fully adjudicated.
Yep, no question. We actually don't go to any level that would be identifiable. It's all very top-level summary, certainly no names, but we'll pay close attention to that, for sure.
Any other questions?
I have.
Stephanie?
Thanks. This has been something I've been looking forward to happening, so excited to see it happening. I had very similar questions with Amy. One additional thing that I was thinking about, the dashboard seems to be just like a place where you would be linking to the deeper data. But would there be kind of maybe an executive summary or kind of a color coding of some type on the dashboard where, you know, do it super simple, red, yellow, green signals of how we're doing in each of those categories? So, at a quick glance, you can kind of see how we're doing just from a very quick overview? So, you don't actually have to link into everything if you didn't have the time or you wanted kind of the high, high-level kind of...
Yeah, we can, we can think about that. Off the top of my head, it could be maybe something like it's how the trend is. Like, I wouldn't want to always have red. But if we're trending into positives, that's something like that. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And there will be an executive summary. So, I just give an example of what we, you know, the links. But I like the idea of executive summary and then some sort of quick glance assessment of how things are going, yeah.
And I think it'd be helpful also to have that explanation of why we're doing, looking at those particular factors.
Yes.
Either a link to your first presentation where you kind of go over that, or if we could just have a sentence or two, because some parents, again, may not, you know, stay with it for two and a half years to listen to each of these meetings.
Well, if they want. So, that's what my vision would be for that, say, math fact mastery grade four. My vision would be hit that link, and on there is a little summary of those same points we would go over in this room. What is this? Why do we bother with this? What's our plan to get it better? And then, here's the data.
Perfect, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Joe?
I just had it. Oh, go ahead, Joe, sorry.
I want to, I saw you press your button.
Oh, yeah. Do you have your...
Okay. I just had a quick question. One of my, I like this, and I appreciate the transparency. One of my concerns going with the quarterly reporting was, would this create more like testing or work? But it sounds like we actually already have all this data. We're just sharing it in a more frequent way? Is that what...
No more testing.
Like, testing for the kids or anything like that?
Correct. No more assessments, any more or less than we normally do. We're going to create some more... Correct, no more assessments, uh, any more or less we normally do, we're going to create some work in the back room to get populated. But we ended up doing that anyway every January, so it's just more like instead of a huge dump of work January, it's, it's spread out amongst the course of 12 months. But no more for the kids, it's the same exact.
That's, that's just all I wanted to know, yeah, thank you.
Gavin, did you have, you raising your hand or please?
Um, yeah, I just want to say I'm really appreciative that we have this because the achievement gap and, and disparities in equity are some things that like really affect. Um, minority students negatively in all facets of learning, so I think that the data is always changing, obviously, so I hope that we change with it, with the way that we attack.
Okay, we're going to be, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, flexible, and I, I don't use the word pivot anymore, because I guess that's overused, but we'll be nimble and change with it, yes, thank you.
So, so Jim, um, again, I think the general approach and the path that we're going down is, is a great one. Um, just to make it real for folks, I want to, I want to use a specific example. Uh, to show how this like construct that Jim is talking about will work, so. One of the things we looked at in the racial equity oversight committee is, is uh, in our gifted population. And the representation of non-white, non-Asian students in our gifted programs, and what we found is that. Um, of our black and brown students, there's, they are woefully underrepresented and gifted. Now, if you, if you talk about the significance of that, I mean, there's research that shows that giftedness is evenly distribute, distributed in the population. It's not like focused on any particular race or anything, so if over time, we look at our gifted population and we see racial disparities. With some groups being woefully underrepresented, it's not because of the giftedness isn't there. It's likely that there's something wrong with our system and our process that produces those outcomes. So in terms of a dashboard, we could look at the, we could have percentage breakdown of the enrollment of students in our gifted program. And that's not going to change like very quickly or very, or very much over each year. But at least what we can do on an annual basis is we can talk about what we're trying to do to change that, that, um. I guess that pie chart over time, so one of the things we did recently in response to the disproportionality in our gifted population is that we instituted universal screening. For all, all students, so gifted screening in West Hicken is no longer based on teacher recommendation. Because they think a kid is gifted or not, because we know there's some implicit bias that comes in that process. And it's not simply based on parent pressure, because there's certain types of parents who will push to get their kids and gifted and others won't. Take those human elements out of the mix and it's universal screening for all students. So we do a better job as a district to identify signs of giftedness across the population, independent of like what your background, family resources, income. Or, you know, teacher perceptions are. And when we look at this annually, what I would want us to focus on is that, number one, we implemented universal screening. And look at the pipeline of kids and the types of kids that were recommended for more deeper evaluative testing for gifted. And is that, what does that proportion of kids look like? Hopefully it's more representative of the general population of students. Um, and then hopefully beyond that, it's a, you know, a better mix of students who then get pushed, put into the gifted program. But if you look at the macro level, the gifted enrollment population, that's going to take years to shift on a macro level, but at least what we can check on. Is, are some of the changes, the strategies we're putting in place, are they starting to try and change the dynamic of that indicator over time? So that does a few things, one, it keeps us with a focus on that, based on data, not based on feelings or, you know, if someone is like biased or not. It's just looking at student outcome data, which is objective, it focuses up with a, with a eye towards agency that we can do something about it. And that we're checking that we are actually doing something about it and whether or not things are changing in the direction that we're hoping. So that's, that's an example of some of these equity indicators, and I think it applies to a lot of indicators that we look at. The, the numbers might just be a benchmark or based on where we're at. And we can look for them year to year, but I think what's more important and more telling is what are some of the strategies that we're using to try to change the end numbers? And is there anything from those activities that could use as data points for feedback and see how we're doing?
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else, any questions, comments? No, all right, well, thank you again for the question. All right, well, we'll now move on to our first public comment period, we allow maximum five speakers on any particular topic. Um, this first one though is for just agenda topics, comments are limited to three minutes and it is not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on our district website, we have nobody registered in person, Katie, is there anyone online? All right, then we'll move on from our first public comment period. Now move on to our board president report, and I have no informational items or uh, action items this evening, we'll move on next to Jim's report.
Okay, thank you. The, the informational item we have is. Is the same information we got uh, earlier in the year with regard to the enrollment, the, the official 10th day enrollment, you remember that's like, I can't remember what day it was, September 12th or something. But this time tonight, at the board's request, we're breaking it down by section. And each of the elementary schools by grade. So, uh, what this shows up there is, and the yellows are class size guidelines by grade, and everybody remembers it goes up slightly as we go. The blue for each school is the actuals from last year, the 10th day. And the green figures are the actuals from this year's 10th day. So frankly, the numbers could be slightly different, we just got our update November 1st, slightly different, but, but this is what we use on a year to year basis, so we figured we'd use this. And you can see that in all, or it's not really evident, so I'll point out, but in all but two cases. Or I should say, in all cases, we're below our, at or below our class size guidelines. And there are two places where we actually could have had one fewer section. To start the year, but we just didn't, because remember that in August. It's, it's a bit of a melee around here and we have people coming and going with registrations and we have to guess as best we can. How many more kindergartners will show up at Blue Bell, say, so a Blue Bell number, a little hard to read, but it's 86, I think that is it? And we could have actually had just four sections. But we didn't, because we like Blue Bell better, not because someone, you know. It's because we predicted back when we were doing staff hiring that we need another kindergarten uh, section, and the last thing you want. Is to, is to have August 20th roll around, have three more kids show up and all of a sudden you got to scramble to find a teacher. So there and lower grade in the first grade, which could have had actually five sections, if we could have made it. Are the two places where we could have condensed and we did. Now, it's not the end of the world to have kindergarten first, the primary grades this year, the, the year coming out of the pandemic. Uh, normalish as we call it, we don't call it normal, normalish, it's not bad to have primary grades where students were still learning to socialize, still learning, uh, emerging readers. That, you know, that I'm not the least bit upset that we have two sections that are, or two areas that are, uh, could have been contracted, we didn't, I guess, fine. I am very proud of the fact that none of them ended up being over the guidelines, and that also is, is a matter of guesswork. I mean, keep in mind, we're hiring the best teacher we can get and we want. And you can't do that August 20th, they're all taken. So you have to kind of like really project this out and we, we're on enrollment. Like hawks, like basically every week, I have the people in this building to give me the updates. So we're sure that we're not, that Danielle loves that time period, because then she gets to hire more people than she planned for, or less or whatever. And has, she has her puzzle pieces to work out, the principals love that, they don't really, because then they don't know how to assign kids to class. But in the end, this is what it looked like. And I, I think this year we ended up doing a, a pretty darn good job. Any questions?
What is the max, is it 26?
Say again, sorry.
Oh, what's the max number of students?
Um, well, there, we, in the yellow there, it's a guideline, it's, it's a maximum is a, is slightly. Uh, problematic, but that's when, that's the number we use when we start thinking about breaking. We have, for example, so, for example, in the past, we have, I don't know, grade two at one of the schools, grade one, three, whatever, gone over that guideline, because more students show up.
Yeah.
If more students show up in July, we'll break into a different section, because we can have time to hire another teacher, distribute the kids in, in a way that makes sense. If, if these new registrations come in. October 1st. It's awful to break up classes and start all over again after a month of getting to know your teacher. So that has happened in the past and we have, for example, added an aid to help. Uh, in that situation, we don't have any of that right now, we could, I mean, it certainly could have more registrations in November or, or whatever that matter. That's how we respond.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you. And then the rest of my report are two action items that we're just reviewing tonight, we're not voting until Monday. And those would be the ever popular and important. School calendars for, in this case, 23, 24, which is next year, believe it or not, already, and 24, 25. So those are documents in the packet and out for the, uh, for the public. The, in both cases, the construct follows the same as what we've had over the last five or even more years. Where we start before Labor Day, Monday before Labor Day. Have a couple recess periods here and there and try as best we can to get out as early as June as possible without compromising our. Our need for regular breaks over the course of the year. Looking over the two students there, because they know how this is, and um, whether it's a long weekend or a voting day or something. And yes, there are two emergency closing days, known to some circles as snow days, built in. And yes, we will continue to have those if we need them. Now, the good news is we have actually the flexibility to have other days as well as snow days. So that we don't push that end date in June down to June 21st or so. I was laughing, because the seniors don't care about the last day of school, all they care about is that graduation day, I know, it's, it's not a secret, it's okay. Gavin's, mm, okay, so anyway, this is always the annual uh, construct, it's, it's worked, I think these work nicely. I would call out that in the one year, the spring recess actually ends up being. Before Easter, Sunday, one year becomes, ends up being after, that's just because where it falls in the calendar. You don't want to have, you try not to have all your days off bunched together in two months, so then you have two months of. Five day weeks straight.
Hey Jim, I have a quick question. In 23, 24, we have Yom Kippur, but not Rosh Hashem. And then the reverse.
Right.
24, 25. Do we lose a holiday?
Uh, good point, Zephy, whenever they fall on a weekend, we don't.
Oh, we don't observe it.
Well, we, we might observe it in terms of sports teams uh, having practices rescheduled or activities tampered down, but we don't have an alternate date.
So we lose, like, we lose that extra day off?
I look at it as we gain a day in June.
Okay.
Have we ever thought about starting after Labor Day, because like, I think almost every other district, so around here, started after Labor Day this year, and I know like, for example, Upper Dublin started after, and then they're going to be out just one day after us in the summer. I don't know exactly where they get their extra days from, but I'm just asking a question.
We don't know how Upper Denver does a lot of things, it's okay though. They, they might do.
I could look at the calendar, but.
But um, well, here's the facts, you, every, we all need to get in 180 days, we, here we do 182, so that if we have short dates, it's okay. And there's, and we're all dealing with the same calendar. So you can either go to school early or you go to school late, there's no, really no magic to it.
So my other question would be regarding spring break week, have we ever considered a static week that would not be coinciding with any religious holidays?
Uh, yes, it can be, it, it's typically done this way because that week is usually in a good place between March, well, we have the conference, but it's not really, it's half day week. And the May breaks, it can be, and, and one of the other limiting factors I should point out is the state's schedule for standardized testing. We can't have it, for example, on the week of April 15th, because that's what BS is. Usually have it earlier, they, they usually don't test in March, but then we have that two month problem that we're talking about.
Well, could we just like, as a district, maybe consider saying, okay, first week of April or last week of March, every year, we're going to have our spring break, our spring recess. Because I know that some Jewish members of the community would rather not have spring break over Passover. Um, and I really don't know if we should be constructing our calendar around a Christianity either, do you know what I mean?
It's certainly a conversation that districts have.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to our superintendent report.
Thank you, good evening, I have no action items for my report, but I do have an informational item this evening, I'm, I'm. Pleased to share with you a presentation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, as Gavin mentioned earlier, it's September 15th through October 15th. And this is a wonderful time for students and staff to recognize the history, culture and contributions and influence of Hispanic and Latinx Americans. While we continue to ensure that our curriculum resources reflect Latinx and Hispanic people's history and perspectives. During this month, we do ask principals to share information about how their schools have recognized and honored Hispanic Heritage Month. So tonight I'll share just a few ways that was nation has honored the diverse perspectives and experiences of Hispanic and Latinx people and history. We'll start with Blue Bell Elementary. Um, students learned first what the word heritage means and why we celebrate different health heritages, while we honor and acknowledge different heritages. Um, in Blue Bell, some of the fifth graders researched Hispanic countries and then created a poster with facts about the country and included an image of the flag. Um, on their poster, they took a gallery walk in the classroom to learn about these countries from their classmates' research. Book displays in the library were used in various lessons to highlight Hispanic literature, and in addition to the books in the library. Students were able to read several books on Pebble Go, which is an online resource. At Lower Gwinnett, the library lobby display case was decorated with influential Hispanic Americans who were featured. Each day during morning announcements and children's books, again, featuring Hispanic and Latinx people and characters were put in the display case where. They were also made available to classrooms for various lessons and conversations. Many classes researched and presented on influential Hispanic Americans, you can see some of the students showing off their uh, presentations in the images there. At Shady Grove in the main hallway, there were visual representations of countries from different parts of the world, where people um, from Hispanic and Latinx heritage. And classrooms focused on the many contributions of individuals and groups. One example is from the second grade team where students researched influential figures and completed self portraits using the artistic style of cubism in honor of Pablo Picasso. In Stoney Creek, some of the classrooms welcomed guest speakers to share about their cultures, such as one of our parents uh, in, in the image here. Who visited kindergarteners to talk about her life in Ecuador. Again, students researched influential Hispanic and Latinx Americans who made various contributions in the United States and. Some students helped create a collaborative poster representing some of the influential people that they studied. At the middle school, uh, students selected Hispanic mathematicians to research and created biop poems which are pictured in this, the center uh, image on the slide deck there. Students presented information, they learned about influential Hispanic and Latinx people and gave a presentation to their peers, some of our students are in the image on the left. Um, on their presentation day, and students in world language classes researched and created individual banners in the atrium showcase, which is the image on the right. Uh, Hispanic people, cultures and songs were highlighted daily and the middle school televised morning announcements included information each morning. At the high school, we heard some of those experiences during the um, high school students' report, thank you again to Gavin for that. Um, experiences at the high school included virtual tours, videos and rich discussions as students. Learned about people, places and experiences in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. Various departments approached the topic in a variety of different ways, one example is in 12th grade women's studies class. They discussed Latina and Chicana feminism, um, they evaluated historical colonial concerns for Hispanic women and current day issues through the lens of the feminist perspective. Casa, one of our student clubs, had Hispanic Heritage event on September 29th, where students facilitated a presentation and there was food and a ponchada. Students did informational TV segments featuring Hispanic and Latinx Americans, which aired on WTV's morning show, Wake Up with Nation. Um, we heard about the culinary explor- explorations club and some of the um, fun experiences that they had. Um, earlier with our high school uh, presentation uh, this evening. And in world language, students in Spanish classes learned about the differences between Hispanic and Latino, they listened to different genres of Spanish music and. Research influential Hispanic and Latinx people and then presented to their peers again. Um, the science department used this opportunity to recognize the work and influence of members of Hispanic community. In advancing our scientific knowledge and advocating for the rights of um, underrepresented communities. Of course, this work can be represented in all of our major disciplines, um, there was information. There were informational posters showcased and contributions, about the contributions that have been made by these pioneers. Again, you know, this is a wonderful time to highlight some of the contributions of Hispanic and Latinx people in our country. We, we also know, so it's an "and," and we continue to ensure that diverse perspectives and experiences of Hispanic and Latinx people are included in our curriculum all through the year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that report. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes.
I'm, yeah, I'm just really glad to see that this is like a district-wide thing, and I hope it's continued to be done for, like, the myriad of cultures that we have in our district, to make sure everyone feels like they belong and that they're being taught.
Thank you, Gavin. Any other questions or comments? All right, seen them. Thank you again.
We'll move on now to our Board Solicitor Report.
I have no informational items, but at your meeting on November 7th, you'll be called upon to approve a settlement agreement involving student number E22, as per document 9-1, resolving a special education matter. To the extent there are questions, they can be raised either with myself or Dr. Dewan.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? All right, thank you. Board Secretary Report, Wade.
Thank you. No informational item, and at the next meeting, we'd be requesting, we will be requesting approval of the work session, public board meeting for minutes for September 27th, regular board meeting for October 3rd, the Board Curriculum Technology Meeting of October 11th, the October 17th Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee, and the October 24th Communications Committee meeting in minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Any questions or comments? Okay, seen them. Can you, we have the Board Judge of Health, please, Wade.
Thank you. There's no informational item, and at the next meeting, we'll be requesting approval and acceptance of minuting the Treasurers' report for September 30th, 22.
Great. Thank you, Wade. All right, we'll move on now to our Human Resources Report. Danielle.
Good evening. Tonight, there are no informational items, but for your review, our 10 action items under 12B. The first two action items include a retirement, resignations, appointments, leaves of absence, changes of status, extracurricular changes and volunteer additions. Action item three is revised salary and degree changes. Item four is new and revised extracurricular job descriptions. Item five is the approval of an agreement with Power School to enhance our current applicant tracking product and HRS and add record-keeping capabilities. Item six is a teacher assistant on special assignment agreement. Item seven and eight are approval for conference attendance. Item nine is the approval of the substitute list. And then finally, item 10, which was added as a blue sheet, is the approval of an amendment to the Substitute Teacher Service Agreement. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions or comments? All right, seen them.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Danielle, I have a question with the blue sheet item, with the STS agreement addendum. Is that, is that for the interim high school principal that we are hiring?
Yes, anytime we add a special, an additional type of employee that we may hire through them, we have to do an endendum, so that would allow us not only to hire the current interim principal, but to do it again in the future, and then they just, you know, put their markup.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. I mean, because sometimes I think you could bring on an interim administrator through a direct contract, but we're going through STS for, for this placement, so that's, that's fine.
Yep.
Just wanted to confirm. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, and the Power School software, what is that for exactly?
So currently, we use Power School for many, for, for many of our software products. One of those is, is our HRS and finance system, so that houses all of that data for us. They also have other programs like applicant tracking, which, which, which we currently use. So this would actually enhance our current applicant tracking and add a capacity to do records management. So it actually, it's full circle, so it, it links to our HRIS system, our applicant tracking, and it'll really create some efficiencies in the HR department, and also really enhance the onboarding experience for our new hires, as well as our current employees, and really kind of bring us a little bit more digital. So, less paper. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you again. We'll move on now to our Communications Committee Report. Zepi.
Thanks, Amy. So I have two informational items tonight. One is on an update on the Communications Committee meeting that we had last week. We met on October 26th, and that included families, staff, the, you know, Ronnie and myself were on that, and we looked at information on the four proposals that the district will be bringing forward. We, we talked through what are some of the things that the district is doing to kind of establish or kind of help with the communication of this information. We will be having some updated resources on the website. We'll have frequently asked questions, resources, information about adolescent sleep, the, the benefits of, you know, moving forward with later start, and then comparisons of the other districts who have made similar changes. There's going to be a number of communication conversations in the month of November. The first one tomorrow with the staff, so it is with the district staff only for tomorrow. November 9th will be another session, and that's for all families, students, staff, community. It could be, it's open to anyone, and it will be via Zoom or YouTube. And then November 14th to the 22nd, there will be a survey that will go out to everybody, families, and students from grades six through 12, to get feedback on the options that are being proposed.
One slight point of clarification, that's exactly right. It's families, K to 12.
Okay, through 12.
And students, six.
Yes, that's kind of like what I thought I remembered, and I'm like, it says, okay, never mind. Thank you for that correction. So everybody in the district, family-wise, will get this. Students will only be getting this from six to 12. Makes more sense. Okay. And then more events to come. This is really going to be brought back to the board in early 2023, so this is kind of the first phase of getting that information out. I think last week, there was our first email that went out, so hopefully, everybody saw that communication. Good job with, like, how that came out, like, with all the information. I thought it was really easy to follow, so hopefully, everybody received that. Should I pause and take questions, or move on to my second informational item?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
I just wanted to comment, Zepi. I thought the communication that went out to the community about the school, later school start time options was really well done. It was informative, clear, and visually appealing, is what I, how I described it. It also helped my understanding of what the, the different approaches, which, you know, what the different approaches being considered are. It helped me kind of like better understand what some of the trade-offs might be as we continue to vet this possibility. But I wanted actually to, to get the opinion of our student board reps. I know, I think I've heard Carly speak on this in the past, but Gavin's new, and Gavin, I don't know to what extent you're aware about this later school start time piece, or if you are familiar with the different options that we're considering, but if you have any thoughts to share, you want to, you want to share?
Yeah, I'm really aware of the options that we have. Actually, one of my classes today, we just have, like, topic Tuesdays, and we talk about different things in the district. And we were talking about later school start times, and for options during four, where, like, the elementary school would end earlier than us, I started thinking about how that would affect people with elementary school-age students, and, I mean, siblings, and I feel like a lot of siblings rely on the fact that they're going to be there earlier to, like, pick up their siblings from the bus stop and, like, be able to babysit them. And also, like, I mean, just because we're changing doesn't mean that, like, daycare is changing and, like, you know, after-school helps. I feel like there's a lot of things that we have to consider before we allocate all of our, like, attention to the later start times. And I also, like, we relatively think, like, the student body thinks it's a good idea, but like, it's a lot of things that we have to consider that I feel like, yeah, should be brought up.
Carl, I didn't mean to, like, not give you an opportunity to speak, if you want to, right?
No, I think I probably already did talk about it. Um, yeah, I mean, Gavin said it really well. Another thing that I didn't, I think the last time we talked about this, I may have been very for pushing it back, because I personally love sleeping, but, and I, like, I live for the one day a week. I get my senior privilege. I come in an hour late. It's great, but I didn't think about the fact that teachers commuting could be an issue. And I was talking, we also talk about stuff in our classes for, like, the, we have space. At the end of the day, we'll talk about stuff like this. And some of the teachers have mentioned that they live far, and I don't know, staying after school might be less, I don't know, it might not be as easy for them to do with later start time, so it's just a bunch of other stuff I also didn't consider. I immediately jumped to the, let's push school back, but now I understand there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Yeah, it's definitely more complicated than it seems, but thanks, Zepi, to you and the rest of the committee for pushing this forward and helping us explore this further.
Yeah, and I, I, we've spent a lot of time talking about all those things. It's not a, it's not easy. It's very, very intertwined, but more to come, so keep your eyes open. Look for the survey. Please participate. Please come to those community conversations. I think a lot of these things will be addressed and talked about. So the other item informative that I have is our website redesign update. I feel like this is a topic that I've been talking about for a little while now, but we're kind of coming to the home stretch. We did get some information at the last communications meeting, of how we're kind of updating this website. I must say, Kristin and the team has done a really phenomenal job of working across stakeholders, so it wasn't just done in a vacuum, but she really reached out across the board and really tried to kind of get input internally from the community, from everyone, to make the website experience easier, informative, and really, you know, I think a lot was taken into consideration about the user experience. They're also looking to, they haven't nailed down who they're going to move forward with, but they're going to come in with their recommendation shortly, but the website redesign platform, they're looking at a partner where there would be a mobile kind of element. Right now, in digital worlds, it's mobile first, right, because everybody works off of a phone first. So they're looking at options where it's mobile first, and also mobile compatible, where if there's an, an update or something that happens, that it will be put on the website, into social, into emails, into whatever stream needs, it needs to go in, so it's easier, it's seamless, and it's automated. Right now, a lot of these things are disjointed, and they have to be done separately. So it would be pulling all of these communication tools into one box, if you will. Reorganization of the navigation will be incorporated, improved accessibility. A lot of these new websites also have this disability accessibility kind of opportunity. More resources and information. They actually talk to special education patients, sorry, this is my work life, special education families to see what information they need, what resources they need, so that it's accessible to them, a new parent hub, a back-to-school webpage, so a lot of nice new updates. So over the next two months, there's going to be some continuation of this work, determination on the vendor, and then there will be, Kristin and team is going to come forward with a recommendation that will be brought to the board that we will be voting on. So I, I think we're going to hit the finish line on time and with a really nice update to our website and to a way that we can communicate to our community and to everybody that needs to hear from us.
That's great. Thank you for that report, Zepi.
Yeah, there was a lot.
Very informative. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thanks again. We'll move on then to our Curriculum and Technology Committee Report. Ronnie is not here. Thank you, Dr. Oliver.
Thank you. So we have a few action items. I'll start with our informational item, though, which is a recap of our Board Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting, which was on October 11th. Our attendees included our couple of board members. We had Ms. Hayman and Mr. Frank there, as well as our administrative team with myself, Dr. Chris Field, Ms. Bauer, our elementary principals, and our directors. The summary of the meeting is included in the minutes for further details, but the topics that were covered at that meeting included the middle school schedule for 2324. Ms. Bauer presented the proposed plans and the revisions to the schedule. There's going to be opportunities for middle school families to engage with Ms. Bauer. She'll be presenting and opening up for feedback in the process. So her presentation included the procedures that they followed as they moved through this process over the last year and a half, I guess it's been. We also talked about the elementary school schedule for 2324. We talked about the timeline for evaluating and revising the schedule. One of our targeted outcomes is to extend recess time. That has been a conversation that's been ongoing this school year, so that is certainly something that's one of our targeted outcomes. The elementary principals will be engaging their families throughout that process, seeking input and feedback along the way. And as for the 2223 school year, as that relates to recess specifically, we talked about the importance of ensuring as much as the time that's in the schedule for recess, which is 15 minutes, is actually reserved for recess time. And so working with our elementary principals to push outside of that time, those transition periods, and to help staff and students to be more efficient and swift with those transitions when possible. But throughout this school year, there are going to be opportunities for stakeholder engagement to be a part of the process for creating the schedule for 2324. We also reviewed the federal and state program expenditures. The summary of that is on the board agenda this evening. It's one of the action items. I'll refer to that in a moment. We'll be seeking approval at the November 7th meeting. New curricula and program of studies was a topic that was also discussed, and we reviewed various updates through the curricula and the cycle, in terms of the curriculum cycle. The elementary summer academy and extended school year programs for the summer of 2023 were also reviewed in terms of, again, the timeline and the eligibility process for identifying students who are eligible for those programs. And finally, foundations implementation was discussed. As we know, the foundations program is being implemented for students in kindergarten through second grade, and so we gave an update on how that implementation is going. Any questions before I move on to the action items?
I just had a quick comment. First of all, thank you so much for the recess thing. I know we said it's not this year, but we're going to do our best with the time we have, and hoping next year's is better. And I know a lot of parents are going to be grateful for that, and kids too. The second thing I wanted to, I got to talk with Mrs. Bauer at the middle school, because I had concerns about the change in the scheduling for the sixth grade and how that would affect language. I'm a big advocate for foreign language, but after speaking with her and realizing that it's more of a, not a reduction in time, but a sort of a change in time, and then also that sixth graders could be on the same bell schedule as seventh and eighth graders, it really convinced me that that was the right thing to do. And I know other parents had that concern, so I just wanted to voice that. You know, after looking into it, it really does make sense to me. I hope others would feel the same way.
Thank you for that. And Ms. Bauer will be joining us at the November 7th board meeting, if I'm, if I'm correct, to share a presentation for the full board. Yes, affirmative.
Any other questions or comments? We'll move on to Action Adams.
Thank you. Yes, we have five action items this evening that will be seeking approval at the November 7th board meeting. For action item 14B1, we're seeking approval of an agreement with Dynamic Influences, Dynamic Influence, which is an organization who will facilitate interactive presentations entitled Social Media Landmines. They'll have those presentations for our middle school students, as well as a presentation for all Visahick and Parents and Guardians in November. And this is in response to some of the conversations Um, and this is in response to some of the conversations we have had and recognizing the need for supporting students' digital citizenship and digital safety, as well as our efforts to foster those pro-social skills for students to help um, to support their social and emotional and academic success. So you'll see um, in document 14 dash one, more information about those programs. I do want to make sure that I say the, the, wait, I do want to make sure I say the program for families is Monday, November 28th at 6:00 PM. And that's going to be held at the Wissahican High School. I want to make sure I actually put a plug in for that. So mark your calendars and join us. And there was a communication that went out, so please mark your calendars. It is sure to be um, a very valuable um, presentation with tips and resources for families to support their, their children. Um, for action item 14B2, document 14 dash two summarizes the federal and state grant expenditures for the 2223 school year. Um, and again, those grants were reviewed at the recent board curriculum technology committee meeting. For action item 14B3, the district previously purchased uh, Chromebooks for all students in grades K through two. And this request uh, for approval will be to purchase 40 Chromebooks, which will replace those that have been damaged and cannot be repaired due to system board damage. For item 14B4, we will seek ratification of the outplaced educational services and tuition for three students as identified in document 14 dash four. And uh, for item 14B5, as we continue to provide these opportunities to foster leadership development for our administrative team, we're seeking board approval for two workshops facilitated by a trainer from Bartell and Bartell as described in document 14 dash five. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So dynamic influence um, presentation, that, that's going to be on social media or no, it'll be online as well, I should say. Like people can view it online, they'll be there in person.
Thank you. Yeah. So that event is open to all families to come from in grades K-12 in person. Um, it will also be live streamed, so you can check out the program on the district's YouTube channel.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Then we'll move on to our facilities. Thank you for that report. Sorry. We'll move on to our facilities and transportation committee report.
Uh, thank you. Um, we have an informational item this evening and I know our folks from Nutrition Inc. have been patiently waiting. So thanks for uh, sticking around. And I believe you guys were providing us an update on uh, food services for the district.
If I could just do quick intros, uh, thank you. Um, Sarah Byer is our regional director of Nutrition Inc. Cindy Hill is our local uh, director and Steve Police is our chef, which is really, really nice to have. He's the one who also, I think we'll see him in some of the slides and uh, provide some of the meat, um, extra opportunities for our kids. We don't talk about uh, the food service program very much, so we'll try to keep it quick tonight. Uh, but we did want to um, highlight um, some of the things they do. And board members had specifically had in the past asked me questions about uh, nutrition and sustainability. Clearly, the board always has the ability to either directly through me or through uh, Dr. Chris Field, ask any questions. And uh, Nutrition Inc. has been incredibly responsive to any of the questions that have come forward. So that I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Hi, everybody. As Wade said, I'll try to be quick. I know the delays have already started, so I'm sure everybody is ready to head on their way. But thank you for letting us do a quick introduction. We are um, primarily a Pennsylvania-based company, but we've been with Wissahican for this is our 10th school year. So we're excited um, to have the opportunity to speak to you, just give you a quick update of what is happening in your cafeterias. So um, currently we're really excited. Well, as of last week, we were fully staffed. We are filling one empty position still. Changes very quickly, but we are working with um, almost fully staffed. We're doing lots of training with the staff that's on site. And we're actually looking to expand our staff at the high school to provide more service avenues um, and additional positions um, throughout. This is a picture at Stony Creek where they've said thank you to our staff at that location. So our goals for this school year really primarily focus on highlighting the nutritional options in our program. We've always had a great um, selection, but really making sure the students knew that they were there. Overall program promotion, uh, increasing the vegetarian options at all levels as well as sustainability. So the first thing is nutrition education. Prior to COVID, that really looked at um, going into the classroom with a focus group of students and promoting some type of education that way. Uh, but that really isn't sustainable long-term. So we've developed some programs that allow us to hit nutritional components within the cafeteria, um, letting us hit more students, make it a little bit more fun for a larger population. So these are some of the programs that we plan to implement throughout the school year. We've actually already done mulishious smoothies at Stony Creek, I think two weeks ago. Uh, you can see that picture in one of these um, with the milk and the smoothie where students got smoothies when they came in for lunch that day. Some of the other nutritional items that we are doing are featuring local produce and then highlighting nutrition facts about it, which can be seen on the sweet potatoes in one of the pictures. Uh, the radishes pictured here are actually from Shady Grove's um, garden. And so uh, they bring down some samples from the garden. We incorporate it in the options that the students get to take and Lynn gives nutritional education about it. Wellness Wednesday is a nutrition group program where any student, whether you pack or buy, can get a sample of the uh, a new item, like the corn and black bean salad that I hope some of you tried today. Um, if the student tries something new, they get a sticker. Um, and you will be surprised how many students will take a chickpea if they get a sticker with it. So it's a little bribing, but it seems to work kind of well. Um, overall promotion of the program, we want to make sure that every day it's fun for students in terms of the different colors, the fruits and vegetables, the variety that they get to pick from. But we also do um, some items like action stations. Uh, Steve Police has done multiple action stations at the high school and the middle school last year and this year, some being um, uh, burrito bowl, wing bar, salad bar. Students and faculty seem to really like um, whatever goes out, they get to pick their own toppings for that. Other things include um, like breakfast for new students from middle school. We've done cookouts at field days. So really just kind of is a array across the buildings. Uh, we also have some different programs that we run. Um, some of these are listed here, farm-to-fork, which is local produce, tasty bites. Um, this is an example. On your menu, on October 14th, we ran a recipe of the month, which was buffalo chicken roll. And I hope it went over well. I would have wanted to eat that, so that would have been my option for the day. But um, this is just an example and you can see it on the menus on Nutrislice. Uh, over the last couple of years, a couple of years, two years, with COVID, we've had to really refine our menus in terms of procurement as well as student likeability of our products. So the goal's been tried to streamline so that we can make sure that we have the products on site and that there's stu-, there are items that the students like. Um, I think we still have a nice variety across the board, but we're just trying to work with some uh, abilities that are out of our control. But even with that, we are trying to increase our vegetarian options. This is an actual elementary menu from October 10th to the 14th. Um, so each of the yellow items is a vegetarian item, a hot vegetarian item. They seem to be going over a lot better at Stony Creek than the other elementary schools, but um, it's available across the board at them. Uh, we tried to take, if we already have a meatball hoagie on, we'll put a vegetarian meatball hoagie or a vegetable quesadilla, which seems to be one of the favorites for the students. Finally, our fourth goal for this school year, focus on sustainability. Um, we have transitioned all of the schools to real trays, as you can see back here. Um, except for if there are some dishwasher issues, you will still see some fiber trays. Um, we are putting any sandwiches we can directly on trays instead of putting it in plastic ware. We have real utensils, um, as well as vegetables. We're putting those in paper cups. Um, we're also trialing right now a lot of sustainability products. Um, we haven't landed exactly on any of them, but everything up here is compostable, eco-friendly. So even the plastic looking cups are eco-friendly. The utensils are, everything up here are things that we're currently trialing. We haven't landed on the exact product yet, but it is in the schools and that is what we are currently using. Just a quick show of numbers. Uh, we are um, doing better in lunch, if you look across the board. So uh, 2022, we are actually doing better in lunch than we were pre-pandemic. Um, so not as well as when everybody was free, um, but we are above budget in lunch for September. And breakfast actually has climbed closer to 500 in October with the free breakfast across Pennsylvania. So a lot of students are eating, eating a lot of our meals. And then just a quick, I just wanted to kind of let you know the, the company that we are. Um, we started this, this year. Uh, TNG charities were um, benefiting our student employees and as well as employees within the nutrition group that may be having emergencies. That's something that we're doing for our group. And then this is just our contact information for Cindy Hill, Ms. Your onsite director and myself. And that's kind of a quick summary. So if anybody has any questions, thank you again for letting us do a little sneak peek in what happened in the cafeteria.
Thank you so much for that report. This is something that I care a lot about. My family is vegan slash vegetarian. So having like more options is like awesome. Um, now I've heard, my kids go to Stony Creek, so maybe they've pushed a lot of other couples to buy the vegetarian food. That's why it's so popular. But uh, I've heard from other parents there, and I'm sure it happens at the other elementary schools, where there's a lot of like, you know, chips, um, Doritos, things like this that are out and presented like right there that the students can choose from, and they seem to be more appealing than maybe like the other options, like the healthy options. Like what do we do to promote those healthy options so that, you know, the chips that are right there in front of you aren't what you pick up, but you go up and you pick up, you know, the blueberries or the pineapples, whatever the, you know, the fruit or the vegetable options are.
Well, we do unlimited fruits and veggies for every grade level. We don't restrict any student that wants fruit or vegetable with their meal. Um, that's not part of the national school lunch program. That's just part of how we have been operating over the past couple of years here. Um, I do want to say that all of the products that we serve, whether it's Doritos or anything like that, they do meet the standards for national school lunch program. So those are like reduced fat chips. Like they're not the same ones that you would buy in the store. We also are trialing some different other à la carte things like the hummus and vegetables. Um, there's actually a chocolate hummus and fruit we're going to be trying, some chips and salsa, things like that, that are a little bit different. But I think right now what we have is those chips that are out there and we've pushed some different fruits and vegetables through the educational stuff that we showed there, whether it's um, on a nice tray or in a nice display plate, um, so that the kids can kind of see that. And placing that they see those first before they get to the chip rack. I know that we also um, limited the days for like ice cream sales at the elementary schools are the same days across the board. But we are, I guess, following the school policy too, in terms of what can be offered. Um, but we're willing to work with you guys as a group. Um, this is your school, your cafeteria, so um, it's not an exact answer, but we have, we have all the regulations in place, but um, that's kind of where we're at at this point.
And I also love that you're using like local produce, but also the school gardens. Like this is something that I really wanted to see, is like the students growing our vegetables, then having them harvested and served in our cafeteria. So how do we go about doing that? Like how do we get the vegetables from the student gardens into our cafeteria?
Uh, to be honest, we are not an active member of the student garden. We usually have parent volunteers that are working with the students and then they provide us with the product afterwards. And we, I say we, I mean Cindy creates the science and the educational material that goes with that. But we're not actively part of creating the garden.
I think I could jump in. So, so different schools have different activity um, level support for the gardens. Uh, but whatever is produced from the gardens, if the individuals who are involved with the gardens want that distributed to the children during the school day, it won't like um, supplant something that's part of a type A lunch. Uh, but if we give it to either Cindy or Sarah or Steve, uh, they'll incorporate it. They'll make sure that the kids have an opportunity to uh, eat it. Um, and then also as they noted in one of the slides, they also try to educate. But it's um, pretty dependent on how active the individual garden is at the school.
Great. That's so awesome to hear. And then the other thing is the plastic. So when I did lunch duty, I, I was like so disturbed by the amount of plastic that was going into our trashcan. So I am so happy to hear we're doing trays and limiting the amount of plastic we use in our cafeteria. So that's like amazing. And then my last comment is this hummus is just delicious. I really liked it. I really want the recipe. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question. Do we compost food waste? I see these containers are compostable, but do we actually compost?
So, so they, they, that isn't their decision.
Oh, that's not on that.
Right.
Do we wait compost?
We don't.
Can we start doing it?
But it wouldn't, it's not their fault. No.
No. I'm not blaming you.
So if, if we decided that we wanted to do composting, we would have to have that go through facilities or have to be a discussion about um, how to do it, who's doing the labor, workers comp and those types of things. But that wouldn't be Nutrition Inc. who would be involved.
Okay. But if they're going to invest in these compostable containers, we should.
Right. We, we separate.
Yeah.
Those types of things. But if you're asking if we onsite, do we do that?
I agree. I think that's something we should look into. Gavin, you had a comment?
Um, so I'm also vegetarian and my family is. So are vegetarian options also being increased in the high school as well?
I know that we have been bringing in some different products. I think that they're mostly just on the line. I don't know if they're menued as distinctly as they are at the elementary school, correct? Like we still have the vegetarian, that like meatballs, if it's a vegetarian meatball on the line, if it's like spaghetti and meatballs that day as an option, but we can increase the visibility to those students at the high school. So that it, everybody knows that it's there. Um, so I think that that can be carried through from what I just showed about that elementary school.
Yeah, that would be great. Was that Paul?
Yes, I, I have one quick question. Um, it sounds like you're doing a fantastic job, but I love the diversity of the offerings that you have. Um, but for students who have strict dietary needs or allergies or, or strict restrictions in their diet, what ability do we have to guarantee that there's no cross-contamination within our, our offerings between, for instance, gluten-free diets that cannot have any uh, cross-contamination with, with any gluten products? As one example, or others? Do we have that ability to guarantee there's no cross-contamination? And if not, are there things that we can be doing in the future to help ensure that?
That's a good question. So on your school website, you will find um, a medical care form that is posted for any student. Nurses and the administrator, or the building um, secretaries also are aware if they receive that back. Once we receive that back, we can develop a menu for any student that has any dietary needs. I think the most recent one that I've been involved with was a Blue Bell student, um, just had some different allergies and we were able to develop a menu for them. We can prevent the cross-contamination. Um, we have procedures in place that require a separate section if necessary, or sanitation procedure in between the prepping process.
To follow up on Paul's question, are the items in, in the lunch line, uh, I see you have these symbols online. Are those labeled accordingly so the students can see those symbols, like if it has gluten or if it has meat or dairy or whatever?
That is only labeled online.
Okay.
Just add to that, uh, I've been at this a while and in my previous life, I was a business administrator and dealt with lots of food service, be it our own or uh, contracted. And I remain highly impressed with Nutrition Inc.'s uh, flexibility and quality and personnel. So current administration and previous, those who are here before. And so I just want to publicly thank you for being such a part of our school. It's really, really awesome.
Happy to be part of your school as well. Thanks. Any other comments or questions?
I'm just going to say thanks for all you do as well. I didn't mean my, my question to be mean in any way. I, I want to say thank you. We're asking tough questions, but we really appreciate you being here and we appreciate what you're doing for our students and making sure they're fed every day. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, uh, Nutrition Group team for again, joining us this evening and sticking around and giving us a great update.
Please take any of the food or samples with you, um, even the salads. Those are what we offer at the school, but they can go with you home if you would like. So please help yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good snacks for the Phillies game. Okay, continuing on with the facilities and transportation report, we have uh, three action items that are on uh, our agenda and up for vote uh, next week. The, I'll speak to the first one of them. I'll have Wade give some more background on the, on the remaining two. But 15B1 is the approval of a contract with Bus Patrol, which is um, a company that provides a, a bus camera system on all our buses to help um, take pictures and catch uh, cars that violate the stop arm law, the stop arm of the bus when it's picking up children. We had some discussions about this uh, in previous months and uh, the administrative team went back to Bus Patrol to refine, um, and get more clarification on the contract terms. and get more clarification on the contract terms with the company. And we do have more information about that now. In taking a closer look at the contract itself and the financial terms of their agreement though, even though in general, I'm, I'm for the idea of a bus camera system to catch people who break the law and violate the stop arm piece of the, of the buses, the financial terms that the vendor is offering us, I don't think are that attractive to me. I mean, basically based on the information that we have and just a more reasonable assumption of like the amount of bus violation tickets that we would be sending, the net result is that on a monthly basis, if our experience is similar to methactin, we would get about a thousand dollars a month in revenue from the, from the bus tickets, which sounds good. But at the same time, the vendor would be getting twenty four thousand dollars in that same month. And so, and this contract is a five year contract. So in the course of a year, we would get maybe about twelve thousand dollars in revenue, which is great. It's better than zero, right? But at the same time, the vendor is getting nearly a quarter of a million dollars through this arrangement. And then the contract is for five years. So then we're locked into that, that financial arrangement. So, I mean, given that, that just kind of, well, that doesn't sit well with me, that sort of sharing of the gain, let's say, even though generally speaking, I am for greater enforcement of people who violate the stop arm of the bus. I just, I'm not comfortable with the financial terms that the Bus Patrol firm is offering us. And it seems like they're the only ones to do the full service package like this. Other vendors who kind of compete in this space will just do the cameras, but then they don't do any of that ticket enforcement kind of stuff. This is the only one that does kind of the whole, the whole process. So that's just, you know, my comment and my read on the Bus Patrol contract. And if anyone else wants to take a closer look, has questions, we can raise them here. We also have a chance to discuss further next week.
But Joe, I don't think we're doing it necessarily for the money, right? I mean, like in general, we're doing this to ensure that no student gets injured while getting on or off a bus. Right?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's, that's definitely in concept, a goal. But I, at this point, I don't, number one, know how, how frequent or what the scale or magnitude of these violations are in our district. And I haven't heard of any actual like injuries or accidents as a result of such violations. And then again, at the end of the day, like entering into arrangement that allows an outside company to take, you know, make significant dollars without giving any sort of more equitable share to the, to the districts that they're partnering with. Again, it just doesn't sit well with me. But again, that's my own personal, right? So I just wanted to put that out there.
And there's no opportunity?
It's my understanding that we hire a computer security company that makes six figures, correct? We pay them six figures a year.
For security software?
Correct. Yes. Okay. So there are companies that are in the business of making money for security purposes. This is another one. I don't know how data of figuring out if somebody's been hurt or not, instances of accidents, instances of injuries should be our baseline. Anybody who drives through the community, whether it's this one or any others, will see that there are people who are offenders of disregarding traffic laws. And they disregard traffic laws when it comes to school buses and children at a rate that I don't think we can ignore. I also don't know that there are any other competing options at this point. It seemed like this was the one that we would be using as do other school districts. And I think that while the, you know, the cost to them and the income to them may be high and the, I guess the revenue to us may be low, I think the, the ultimate issue is are we creating a standard of safety for our kids when they get on and off the bus? I've personally seen people drive around school buses, kids almost get hit, and these people don't care. And like any other law, the way to deter it is to enforce the law. And if we have an opportunity to enforce the law by creating not only this arm, but security cameras in a way to make them pay a violation, I think we should seriously consider that and not necessarily put aside, put aside the issue of how much we're going to make or how much the company's going to make. But at the end of the day, how safe are we going to make our school district and our kids? And I think that is the overriding issue. While I understand that that's a concern, should the company be making an X amount of money? Should we not be making as much? I think the overriding goal is when we started this whole process was to ensure first and foremost, the safety of our kids getting on and off the bus. And if we can deter this violence, because it appeared to me that from the statistics you had Wade, it appeared that at least in another district, first time offenders were first time offenders only, and there was a reduction of ninety some percent of repeat offenders. If we can do that, if we could eliminate that by such a large number, I don't know why we wouldn't seriously consider implementing such a program. Even if it is for five years, somebody's always going to come along to compete with that. But I, I don't know that we can wait and say, well, let's find out if they're going to be lower bidders across the board. It's a question of how do we make our kids safe now? Because I don't want to be the one to have to report on, or you or anybody else an injury catastrophic event because somebody just didn't care, didn't stop, and there was no ramifications for that. So that's just another perspective.
So, so just jumping in, I think the board has absolutely hit the points that I would have accented. So thank you for doing that. I was able today to have a another virtual meeting with a company who does, for the first time, I found another company that does do the sort of soup to nuts product. They do offer the citations. I hope to, in the next two or three days, get another proposal, but I could tell by their wording that they're not looking to create revenue as much as to put together a proposal that are break even. So it may be, you know, slightly different, but I don't think it's going to be significant, significantly different. And it's certainly not going to be, it certainly doesn't sound like it's going to be a revenue creator. But it'll be another option and we'll see, you know, at least there'll be some other option out there. The other companies, as the board members have noted, they're really just camera options with, you know, some certain different bells and whistles. And as I have progressed through additional conversations with all these parties, I, I think the board hit it right on the head, which was originally when this was discussed, I was invited to a meeting with the police officers and the municipalities that we represent. I think there was a belief that there was going to be a lot of revenue creation for all parties. And I don't think that really will exist based on the actual activity that we're seeing in neighboring districts. It's still a very, very solid technology that seems like it will work. And I do believe what Marshall noted as, you know, reducing the second time offenders, I think that probably will occur. That was one of Mr. Frank's questions, which is really, you know, do we have sort of data to support that? And two of the companies that I have spoken with really do talk to that. So I think that that probably is a real possibility. So I just wanted to really get feedback from the board as to where I should go, because at this point, I'm sort of spinning wheels. And I wanted to know whether the board was interested in this technology and we should pursue it, keep going and trying to find other vendors who are interested in doing it. Or at this point, have somebody come and do a presentation to the board at a different night. If the board is interested in pursuing this with Bus Patrol, sort of knowing the financials that are lower, as Joe noted, then, you know, we can do that. We can bring it forward as a motion with all the contracts at the next meeting. And in the meantime, if I get the proposal from the other entity and it's interesting or different, then I can update the board. I really do believe I'm going to have by the time the next Monday meeting rolls around. So that's, that's where I am. And I appreciate all the feedback that the board's provided and anything else that you can.
Yeah, Wade, what I would say is that we should bring, we should bring it to a board vote. I mean, I respect my, my, my opinion, but I'm one board member. I'm one vote. Right? I don't think the board has all the same opinion on this. There are different perspectives and I think it's worth an up and down vote from the board. If enough board members are okay with the, with the vendor and the financial terms, then we, then we agree to it and we move on. If not, then go back to drawing board with other options. Okay? Thank you.
If I may add though. Go ahead.
Joe or Wade, is there an opportunity to negotiate the terms with this vendor? Has that been done or can we do that?
So, so I've tried and essentially every Pennsylvania entity is getting the same deal that we have. So it's the internal, the external cameras at the two hundred and whatever it is dollars per month per bus. I don't think we're going to have the ability to get some better deal because I think they'd be afraid that other entities in Pennsylvania would become aware of it. If this vendor that I spoke to today comes up with something that's substantially better, maybe we have the ability to leverage that into some type of a better deal. So, so I'm trying, but I haven't gotten there yet.
Wade, one alternative. Wade, one more alternative to, to ask them to, if they would consider is that the contract term is five years and there's no option to terminate unless for like cause, which is, which is kind of difficult to do. So given the uncertainty and the newness of this, some kind of contract term that's shorter than five years or giving us an out, like if we feel like, you know, there's another option that's, that's better out there. Because it seems like a new and a kind of evolving space that we have some ability to get out of the contract and pursue another, another brand.
Understood.
I'm sorry, Paul, did I interrupt you from another question?
No, that's okay. I'm sorry, Joe. I just have one other quick question. The numbers on, at first glance, do seem quite slanted in their favor. I'm curious though, I'm assuming that's a gross number on their side. And I would imagine they have a lot of capital expenses to implement the program as well as administrative programs, administrative expenses ongoing. Have they shared any of that with us so that we have a, a better understanding of what their bottom line might be? Not that that's the only factor here, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, your point is well taken and I can try to get more details, but you did hit it right on the head, which is, you know, they're, they are responsible for the camera installation, the cameras themselves, and then the ongoing review of all the information that comes to them on a daily basis to generate whatever information is sent to the municipalities, which then could become a citation. So it's one time costs in addition to maintenance going forward and administrative costs. But I don't have a breakout of exactly what that looks like. I'm not sure if they'll give it to me, but I can certainly ask.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so they, we sign a contract with them and then at that point, they install the cameras on the buses, on first student buses essentially. And then the financial terms are essentially revenue is created through citations. They, they get sixty percent of the revenue, we get forty percent of the revenue. And then out of, and I think this is what is sort of unpalatable to Joe, out of our forty percent, they then recoup a part of their costs for the installation. And, you know, again, if I were trying to market for them, I would tell them not to present the numbers that way, but that's not my job. Regardless, that's where that comes from. So for every bus that they have to install, their costs are more. So that's where they recoup their costs.
It's a, it's a, what is it? About two hundred dollars per bus with a camera every month?
Right.
The, the total is about seven thousand dollars a month for the technology of the buses. And that's what's netted against the revenue from, from any ticket revenue that's generated. And that's what adds to the lopsidedness, I think, of the net dollars to us as a district. But again, I mean, I think it's, I think it's worth, worth bringing it forward for a full board vote, see where, where things landed and kind of going from there. Wade, do you want to, to give a quick review of the other two action items?
The other ones are quick. The, the biodiesel, we're ratifying the pricing. We went to the board previously and talked about the fact that we were going to lock in the pricing and this is the price that we locked in at. And then we're placing a very exciting walk behind auto scrubber at the high school that is ten years old and the cost is twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. And we actually have three scrubbers. This is one of the three.
All right. Any questions for Wade regarding the other two action items?
I still have questions about the first action. I'm just a little slow with my green button here. Do we have any idea of what the frequency is on a daily basis in the West End and school district of this stop arm violation?
Yeah. So, so I don't. And, you know, candidly, it wasn't, it wasn't district personnel who really were the ones that were most on top of this issue because I think what ends up happening is folk who see things like this, they may contact us infrequently, but they more frequently contact the local police. So it's the local police departments who were most interested in bringing this technology, you know, for consideration to the, to the school district. I don't think that they would have any tracking mechanism to say, well, it was, you know, three hundred in August last year or anything like that. But they, I asked them directly and they do believe that this is a big issue for the community and that's why they're bringing priority. I don't have numbers.
But we could probably get the bus drivers to do a daily tally of how often that it happens. Do we have any actions now for bus drivers to write down license plate numbers or do any reporting that way?
Yeah. So again, great question. So the bus driver is doing a lot of things at that point in time. So they are very unlikely to be able to also frequently know, you know, that maybe even something is happening, depending on when it happens in the action and then specifically have the ability to, in the correct direction, it would even have to be get a license plate number. So possible, but, but not probable based on, you know, the way things are.
Right. I understand. I couldn't do it if I were, you know, I had thirty kids sitting behind me calmly or not.
I, I, I do think that, you know, Joe, Mr. Antonio asked the correct question, sort of from the original analysis to sort of what is the activity? And if the activity in methactin last month was eighty two tickets, six citations, that's a pretty good indicator of, you know, say there's twenty, twenty days in the month, student days, that's about four tickets a day. So that's about what methactin experienced. Which on the one hand, you're like, you know, that seems crazy. You know, that there's four violations every single day that's going on, but that's actually what the activity was. But it's still certainly a lot less than what the company pitched to us as what they thought might happen.
Yeah. What little I was able to find out about this, the instances of this, I guess nationwide, that one school that reported that on average, maybe every bus had one violation every day, but then there's not much information out. So I wouldn't bank on that number for sure.
Yeah, that would be, that would be really bad.
And then there were apparently other districts that banking, expecting a lot of dollars to come in from this that they didn't realize. And let's see, there was one other point that, oh, where there are issues involving school buses and injuries, it's more likely the bus that someone's injured by. Usually it's an adult. And apparently the, the instances of children being struck by either a bus or a car in this scenario is very, very low. Not that it's not worth protecting our own children against, but have, finally, have we explored at all, asking, since this is putting us in sort of a pseudo law enforcement role, have we asked these, the local law enforcement agencies to put the bill or at least part of it rather than the school district bearing all the expense?
So, so I think they are going to be taking our part of the burden. I think they're willing to do so. Their burden is that they have to review all of the information that is sent to them by, in this case, Bus Patrol to review it on, they say they do it on a morning basis every day. And then determining whether that will hold up, not hold up, or is a problem. And then at that point, determining that it's a citation. is a problem. And then, at that point, determining that it's a citationable offense, and then going from there. So, they are, they do skin in the game from the standpoint of their labor. And right now, I'm sure they're tight on labor as well.
Thank you, Wade.
Okay. Unless there are any other questions on any of these action items, that's a wrap for the Facilities and Transportation Committee report.
Thank you, Joe. We'll move on now to our Finance Committee report. Dave?
Thank you. We have no informational items. We have three action items that we're seeking approval for next week. The first is approval of financial reports. The third item is approval of the list of payments. Those are routinely on the agenda. And then, the second one is approval of a resolution and attachment for Act 34 hearing on December 12, 2022 regarding Blue Bell Elementary School Construction Project. And Wade, if you would elaborate on that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. So, it's very similar to Stony Creek, which we had an Act 34 hearing as well. It's a formal procedure that's dictated by the state. So, we're setting the meeting for 6:30 on December 12. Mr. Sultanic and the firm of Fox Rothschild will support us from the standpoint of helping us make sure that we hit all the appropriate items at that meeting. We'll also have a stenographer. And it is essentially an ability for the public to say they love the project, hate the project, or are silent on the project, and the board to listen to sort of a summary of the project. And at that point, truthfully, the assumption is to move forward with the project. But, you know, at that point, we could decide not.
Thank you, Wade.
Any questions or comments? All right. Saying that, we'll move on now to our Public Security Report.
Thank you. We have no informational items tonight. There are multiple action items for next week. I'll be seeking approval of action items B1 through 23, which have to do with the 600 series relative to finance in our policies. So, I will be looking for approval of the second and final reading of our policies related to trauma-informed approach, diabetes management, student discipline, threat assessment, gifts and gratuities, job-related expenses, budget preparation and adoption, tax levies, tax collection, bank accounts and deposits, investments, standard purchasing procedures, establishment of special funds, fund balance, GASP Statement 34, procurement cards, federal fiscal compliance, emergency preparedness and response, and school security personnel with the deletion of several policies having to do with other areas that are being incorporated into new policies. So, that's what we'll be looking for next week.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Saying that, we'll move on to the Racial Equity Oversight Committee. Paul or Joe?
Since Paul's a virtual and in transit, I agree to give the update for the Racial Equity Oversight Committee report. We had a meeting on October 17. And at that meeting, we got an update from the administration about professional learning opportunities for staff. And they outlined a whole series of training for not just teachers, but also administrative team and support staff on issues related to equity and cultural responsiveness. So, that was good to hear that update. Also, it was nice to see that it wasn't just teachers who were being trained on this, but the support staff as well, because they are an important part of the school environment. We also reviewed a proposed schedule of future meeting dates and topics for this academic year. And one of the things that's new and different for this year is, one of the sessions was going to be a community conversation, well, more of a town hall, that we are planning for in December. And the intent is to do it somewhere in the community, in Ambler, potentially the Ambler Borough Hall, or maybe the Ambler Library, and to give an opportunity for members of our community to engage and provide feedback and perspectives with the Racial Oversight Committee members on topics related to racial equity within Wissahicken. So, it'll be a facilitated discussion, primarily an opportunity for the committee members to listen and learn from other folks in the community who want to share their own personal experiences, again, on issues of racial equity within the Wissahicken School District. We're trying to nail down details of that, but it looks like we're going to be doing it sometime in December. And we'll be sure to advertise it and promote it broadly to the community in advance.
Great. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? The report.
Thanks.
We'll now move on to our report of Board Representatives. Extracurricular. Marshall?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. MCIU Board of Directors and Legislative Committee, we have not the recent Legislative Committee. And in October, we did not have a meeting. Our next meeting is November 16 for the Board of Directors. So, I have nothing to report for the MCIU. Next, we have North Monco Technical Career Center. David?
Thanks. At our meeting on October 17, we got a presentation of the audit for the past fiscal year. The Technical Career Center is fiscally sound and responsibly guided. The audit was clean with no findings. And I guess one of the highlights of the report, which is in the budget as well, is the establishment for the North Monco of a capital reserve fund, which they haven't had in the past. And they're able to fund it that this, I think this coming, the past budget year of $400,000, which their total budget's about 13 million. So, that's a pretty substantial amount to start with. And we'll see if it can grow there. But otherwise, the covered routine personnel and business manners matters, and that's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you again. We'll move on now to Dan. PSBA report.
The only thing I want to say is there's an election next Tuesday, and I would encourage everyone to vote. And if you like public schools, I would encourage you to vote for candidates to fund those public schools. That's it.
Thank you, Dan. We'll now move on to our second public comment period. During this public comment period, we allow maximum five speakers on any particular topic. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And it's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on our district website. We have no one registered in person and no one online. All right. So, we'll move on now to board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any comments? No? All right. Then do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn. All favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. We're adjourned.